We're gonna, we're gonna start the meeting. Thank you all for coming. This is a meeting of the Passaic County Board of, I keep forgetting we're not real, there's county commissioners. Roll call, it's June 28th, 2022. Roll call, Lou.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Lapour.
Here.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Here.
Director James.
Here. Could I have an announcement on the open public meetings law? And it's gonna be followed by an invocation, a pledge of allegiance done by Commissioner Duffy. And after that, please stay standing for a moment of silence and remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and all who have died from COVID-19 in Passaic County, especially the 2,149 souls.
Director, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask Anthony Van Cherry to lead us in the part of pledge allegiance, if he would. When the time comes, Anthony, all right? Sit down. When the time comes, I'll let you know. Don't get so quick.
See, I could have warned you, but you know him, so I don't have to warn you.
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including annual notice and adopted at the reorganization meeting, and filed with the county clerk, posted administration building, mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law. O God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me and State County Commissioners in still eluding the flag that represents the greatest country in the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There's a moment of silence, Tara. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move it. Second.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Epstein.
Director James.
Yes. We're gonna have approval of proclamations. This Passaic County Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize the Ark of Bergen and Passaic Counties as they are celebrating its 75th anniversary. And can I have a motion to approve?
We'll move it. Second.
Roll, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. I'm gonna turn this over to our administrator, Anthony DiNove. We know why everybody's, most people are here tonight. So we are gonna produce that resolution to you. We're still gonna send it out, but I'm gonna turn over the program to our county administrator, Anthony DiNove.
I'm really gonna turn it right back over. As you know, I think it was late last week, Tony Van Cherry had contacted a few of the commissioners about the possibility of the Veterans Clinic on Getty Avenue here in Patterson being closed and what a travesty that would be for the veterans in our county. So the commissioners had asked that we put on the, on the agenda not only a little discussion about it, but also a resolution opposing it. I do understand, Director, that there has been some updated news in that Congressman Bill Pascoe, Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill, who were both advocates for this not happening, not only here in Patterson, but all over. And that the VA has decided to reconsider the closure. So again, I mean, kudos to the congressional delegation who hopped right on it and obviously have impacted it. Nonetheless, the resolution is on there. We know, having dealt with government before, that things can change. And while today things look great, tomorrow something else could happen. But that's really all that I have, and I don't know if any of the commissioners wanna address the issue themselves.
I want to address Mr. Van Cherry, who's a remarkable person, but always, I will appreciate your service. We all appreciate your service. Tony Van Cherry, I've been, I'm here 17 years, my 17th year here, and I met Mr. Van Cherry early on, and he has been the same person, the advocate, steadfast supporter of all things veterans, and he has done a remarkable job. And as I said, that his dedication of a lane being named after him in Patterson. We put up flags in the city of Clifton around City Hall. For those of you who live in the area, it's quite a sight because the entire City Hall complex is, is covered with 2,289, I think, American flags. And they're full size, and when it's windy out, it is the most remarkable sight that you can ever see and hear. We had a killed in action section, and the problem with the killed in action section is a large portion of them didn't have family members, and that's who usually buys and pays, you know, pays for the flags and requests the flags are up. These folks who gave all their, everything in their, in their service to the country had no family to do that for them. So we arranged to have the avenue of the flags become a nonprofit so they could get open space money and they can get private donations. So they applied for their money for the flags for the killed in action. And Tony Van Cherry walked them through that entire process because he had done it for the Veterans Park many times. And I could tell you that one of the goals we had is to make sure everybody who served and who died in service to the country had a flag in their name in that field, and they have that done today because of his help. Tony, again, I want to say that I thank you for that. It was, it really always gnawed at me that we couldn't do that until you helped and got it done. And also, you're relentless and got a tank and a personnel carrier, even though the tank was active. Not sure why it was. It still works, it's not a good thing. So, you know, listen, the Veterans Park is just a true monument to your dedication to what you do. And I, you know, we have to talk about keeping it in the shape that we need to keep it in, so we will have those conversations. But thank you, all of you, for everything you did. We wouldn't be sitting here if it wasn't for people just like you. We wouldn't be sitting here tonight, having the freedom talk that we're having tonight. So I love you all, I don't care what party you are, I don't care how you vote, I care that you served this country honorably and that you're here tonight to help us congratulate the congresspeople for doing what they needed to do. And we're gonna keep on this to make sure that the VA administration does exactly this all throughout the country. They need to make sure that vets have access to decent healthcare, good healthcare. Sandy, I know you were involved in some of this, so I'd really like you to speak.
Yeah. You know, Tony, when you mentioned last Tuesday night about the VA wanting to close the Patterson Clinic, it just hit, I think, all of us, I don't just speak for myself, all of us, like, really deeply because we know that we lost a lot of our armed force members overseas. But when you guys come back, you're still fighting the ravages of whatever war you served in. And as a society and as a government, we have to continue to do more for you. And I can't see anyone from Patterson or whoever goes to the Patterson Clinic, Traipsen up to Hackensack or over to the Bronx, especially with spinal cord injuries. It's unthinkable to me that the VA would even consider closing the center in Patterson. So we stand here and we mobilize as quickly as we could because, you know what, we gotta get the message out there that we are not going to abandon our veterans, that the reason people even sign up to join the armed forces is because they think, and it's not always true, as I know you guys can attest to, they will be taken care of when they come home. So we can't give up this fight. We have to make sure that your voices are heard loud and clear because there's no way any one of us sitting up here in this dais is going to take a step backwards. We will fight tooth and nail to make sure that that Patterson Clinic stays open. And before one of you guys come up, just tell me if I'm correct, they said that the numbers in Patterson were dwindling. My understanding is that the VA assigns you to what clinic you're gonna go to. So if they're not assigning you to the Patterson Clinic, even though it might be easier for you to get there, then that's something else we need to look at. Because if you live in Passaic County, and unless you wanna go somewhere else, I would think that you would be assigned to that clinic. So I don't know who, who knows more about that, I'm sure you all know more about that than me, but if you can address that when you come up. The COVID did. Okay. Yeah. So the point, and I know they're doing virtual, too. Well, there's nothing like an in-person meeting with your doctor than, you know, virtual doesn't cut, at least not for me. So I'm, I'm gonna tell you, and I stand behind this, and so does do my colleagues, we are behind you 110%. And anytime that we have to take up the fight to support you and support the services that you so richly deserve, we will be here for you, and you need to let us know however we can help. So thank you, thank you for everything you do, and I know that we will continue this fight and we will make sure that you are taken care of. Thank you.
So Director. Director, if I may.
Just, you know, everything Sandy and Bruce said is absolutely correct, and I'm on board 110%. I just wanna kudos to our Congresswoman and Congressmen, especially my, they're both my friends somewhere, but Pascoe and I go, we could all go back a long way in Patterson. But couldn't ask for better champions of, of your cause, our cause. And, and you gotta, you can't take a rider off the ball, as everyone knows, because you really can't trust them, you know, they'll tell you anything you want. But those, that lady and man, I put all the trust in them. They're fighting the fight and leading the fight, and we're right behind them. And the wall is going to be happening, the Vietnam Memorial Wall, rest assured, and everyone on board is on board, so. I applaud you, we have an obligation to take care of our veterans, and, and we need to do that, not just lip, lip second, and that's the way I feel. Thank you.
Anybody else want, wanna address the audience? Anyone?
I just wanna clarify, the, the resolution that is, that was gonna be proposed in, in support of the veterans and in support of keeping the facility open, is that gonna remain on our agenda for tonight so we can vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, good. I mean, as you said, things can change.
Nobody didn't change for that.
Very good. I want, we need to add our voice to our congressional representatives.
Anyone else?
I just wanna thank you all for your service and whatever we could do to help you, please let us know, reach out to us, we'll do everything we can. Thank you.
All right. So for now, can I have a motion to suspend the regular order?
Make that motion.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Willie, Congressman Sherrill's office, and I'm sorry, I forgot you were here, and I was talking to you, that's what happens when you get old. Seriously, I know you wanted to address everybody, and feel free.
Sure. So thank you, everyone. Willie, from Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill's district office in Persippany, thank you so much, Commissioners and everyone, for, for having me. She obviously wishes she could be with us all today, but she wanted me to share the statement with you guys, especially, you know, considering the latest news about the VA's proposal. So here's the statement. So while it's important that the VA uses its resources in the most effective way, you know, the Patterson Clinic provided necessary and important care to the veterans in Passaic County and beyond, and I agree with Congressman Pascoe that this move did not fully consider their needs. I applaud the statement of Senator Tester and the bipartisan group of senators that said that this process will not move forward, and it's important to me that we honor the promise to North Jersey veterans that they continue to have access to high quality and convenient care. And then one other thing I will say, if anyone is having any trouble with the VA getting assigned to the clinic that they would, they want, or anything to do with the health system, please feel free to reach out to our office or Congressman Pascoe's office, depending on where you live, or if, or we'll refer you to the other one, it doesn't matter, you don't have to think about it too hard, but we're absolutely happy to help and we'll engage with them right away. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
We have two very dedicated, very good congressfolks that are representing us in those two districts, and I'm proud to live in one of those two districts and happy to know the congresspeople from both. So we have some meeting stuff to do, and then it's gonna be an open public meeting portion, so if anybody wants to speak, we'll get to that as quickly as possible. So can I have a motion to suspend the regular order of business, please?
Make that motion.
Second.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Motion to adopt guarantee ordinance 2022-04. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
All right, so a motion in two seconds. So is Lapour and Bartlett.
Bartlett was the first second.
And Director, if I may, just a reminder, last meeting, we had the public hearing on the second reading, we pulled it from the agenda, so we don't need another public hearing, but we now can vote on the adoption of this guarantee ordinance.
Okay.
Should we, I need the statement. To read the title.
Guaranteed ordinance 2022-04, resolution authorizing the guarantee by the county of Passaic, New Jersey of payment of principal of and interest on the governmental lease revenue bonds, series 2022. Passaic County guaranteed, City of Patterson Board of Education project of the Passaic County Improvement Authority in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $9,500,000.
Since we've read it, Director, I'll just expound on it a little bit. So the city of Patterson currently rents a building, and they wanna purchase it, they're going to come through our improvement authority because of the county's bond rating and ability to get a better interest rate, and it'll save the taxpayers of the city of Patterson somewhere between $7,000 and $800,000 a year, since the board of ed will actually own the building rather than leasing.
All right, so now I can take a vote on the ordinance? Yes. All right, well, this is on the guarantee ordinance, Louis, you wanna poll?
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Epstein.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Epstein.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Okay, so Commissioner reports, does anybody wanna make one now, or, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, you wanna close, motion to close?
Make that motion.
The regular order of business. It's a good thing I, it's a good thing, it's a good thing he's next to me, seriously, so.
Duffy.
Duffy and who?
Second.
Okay. Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Anyway, back to this, anybody wanna make a report?
I do have one.
Go ahead.
So our next order of business here in the county is, tonight we're going to pass or vote on a resolution opposing the decision regarding Roe versus Wade. In conjunction with that, we will, the county's not sponsoring it, we do as woman-powered Democratic organization, is sponsoring a rally next Wednesday, July 6th at 6:00 PM, right out here on the courthouse plaza. And we're inviting you to come because we need to make it known in Washington that it is not okay, that women's rights are everyone's rights. So I invite you to come next Wednesday at 6 o'clock, we'll be having speakers there, and we'll be having, hopefully, what will turn out to be a huge rally in, in support of, again, reproductive rights, women's rights, whatever you wanna call it. So that's my report. Next Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday, at 6 o'clock, and they'll be parking in the garage right down on the corner, the county garage, so it's all free parking, walk half a block, and you're right in the courthouse plaza. So I just wanted to put that out there to you, and hopefully we'll see you then.
Thanks, Sandy.
All right, Director, I have a little tidbit, just interesting, on Public Safety, Sheriff's Department's gonna donate 50 bulletproof vests to Dominican Republic and 50 bulletproof vests, I don't know, bulletproof or bullet resistant vests to Ukraine. So we're doing our small part, not letting that stuff go to waste and to a good cause, so. Kudos to the Sheriff's Department, kudos to this, this group here. So that's all I have, really, it's most interesting.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Through you, Director, I have, Administration of Finance has 12 resolutions for consideration by my colleagues, and I'm asking for their support. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I just wanna say, Sandy, thank you. First of all, I'm nursing a bit of a summer cold, I am COVID negative tested, but I'm, as we've all...
I think you look pretty good with that mask, actually, I'd keep it on.
Look, the more of my face you cover up, the better I look, there's no doubt about that.
Gonna save you.
But we've learned a lot, and I'm looking at Dr. Gungil over there, who's also wearing her mask, we've learned a lot about how to protect one another, so though it's not COVID, I wanna protect all of my senior colleagues up here from whatever it is I may, I may be carrying, but I wanted to, Sandy, thank you for taking a leading role on that issue. As, as an attorney, this past week has been a lot of giant steps back coming out of the Supreme Court in terms of the liberties that we thought for a lot of years and a lot of decades, for some of us, we could, we could take for granted. And it's a reminder that we can't take anything for granted, not a right, not an election, not an issue that we care about, whatever that issue may be. So thank you for doing that. I just wanna add to everybody who's graduated from high school or who did last week, congratulations to the graduates, congratulations to their families. I had the privilege of speaking at the STEM Academy graduation on Thursday and handing my son his diploma, and it's such a moment for everybody who's enjoying that and going through it. So all the graduates out there, I mean, if you're watching this meeting, I don't know what you're doing with your summer, but nevertheless, congratulations.
Anyone else? Louis? You wanna talk? Okay, good. I, I see nobody else, so we're gonna go to the, I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Anybody wishing to address this board, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address us.
Let me say thank you. Thank you, thank you. But I also want you to feel what we feel. For women who come home, it's especially hard from war. I'm the one that did this story on when Anna goes to war. I went to war because so many of my students from high school joined just by seeing me in a suit. I never recruited, but I felt I was obligated to be there, and if they didn't come home, I wanted to be the one that would be there for their family. It's a two-way foe. It's the military personnel and their family. We must never forget, we don't come back the same, and who takes that on is the family. That's why it's important to infuse the family in everything that we do. Have them go to these clinics so they can see what we go through when we get to the clinics. I want you to just for a minute, go on a small trip with me. Females, 20, 30 years old, coming home with an enlarged bladder and not knowing that it was an enlarged bladder, fortunately, you guys can just go in a corner, go out the window, chuck, and my cry, what, what's in the war? What are you doing? Don't worry, Sarge, I had to take care of something. Well, guess what? We drink the same gallon of water, and we have no way to relieve it. So you have 30-year-old women coming home with enlarged bladders and don't know why. In closing, think about it, most of my male comrades, they can go out if they get together and say, okay, we're gonna go out and play pool or have a beer, but if a female military personnel says that to their family or their husband, they go, well, didn't you spend enough time with them already? See, it's a different rule for women. So when you fight to keep this clinic open, I want you to understand that I have some that have been home 10 years, and I'm just now dragging them, literally dragging them because the family says, I need help. I need you. We need you. We think the congressman has stepped forward, but the fight is not over. So put that proclamation through, because again, it'll roll downhill again, because people forget. But we must never forget, and that's why all of my colleagues are here today to remind you, even at an older age, we are still suffering PTSD, bladder disorder, spinal injuries that they didn't even know they received. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you're doing for us.
Good evening, everyone, Tony Van Cherry, Patterson. I wanna compliment the commissioners here, and the only way I could say that, I loved the Patterson attitude you gave today, you know, with this stance that you did, I mean, you just didn't wait, you went right forward for it. And as you can see, you see the faces of our veterans. In New Jersey, there's 350,000. 185,000 of those veterans are over 65. I just missed it. But there is so much things that we want you to know. In Patterson, I haven't been able to go to Patterson for two years, since Dr. Kat left, an outstanding doctor. They're sending doctors to Paramus, as you, as you heard, in Hackensack. Why? We need them here. Okay? A lot of the veterans that are in this room, and they know other veterans that don't have family to take them to some plot, we don't have the transportation that we used to have, okay? So we need to have it here. For Congressman Pascoe, again, I have to say thank you to him, and it was Senator John Tester from Montana and his committee, a bipartisan, elected officials like we are here, that said no. But when you know the facts, when you see the reality of our faces, and you hear the voices that are crying out, it has to stay here. I have fought like John Harris, Judy Morales, who's still involved with the American Legion, Judy, helping these veterans get what they're earned. We're not asking you to give us a favor, we earned the right to, to that place on Getty Ave. Some of us saw some of the most, never mind, you know what I'm trying to say. Those that went overseas know, cannot tell you the horrors we saw, and yet it's still in us. But when, when we're denied the right to see a doctor, I go to a group on Friday that used to come out of Bloomfield, but because it's a closed environment and we don't have that social distance, we, which we still practice at the VA, okay? And if you, they don't stop you from wearing a mask, which is the right thing to do, and we meet in Oakland now. My brother's from Vietnam, we can sit down and talk about our experiences in person, not on the phone, because I have to tell you, and, and I know Anna's watching, but there's some things I can't tell my doctor on that phone because I'm in a room in the house, and my wife is home. And I need to tell that one-on-one, that's what it's supposed to be for. If you have PTSD, it's hard enough to talk about it to the public, and there's, you know, but we need to talk to our doctors one-on-one. And if you're sitting at home on a couch, your, your children could hear it if they're not working, your wife could hear it, your husband can hear it. So we need to get back into the system the way it was, and this is the first step. I wanna thank you again, they're here, their voices demand to be heard, not just here in the county, but in the state of New Jersey, and of course, the greatest country in the world, America. Thank you and good night. Thank you and good night.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Henry McCormick. I am a member of a lot of veteran groups, and the group I want to mention today is a combat support group for PTSD at the East Orange Hospital. It's the biggest group down there. We have over 200 members in this group. Since the COVID hit, they will not let us meet like we used to down there in the auditorium on East Orange. Every Friday, for one hour, what they used to do was send one of the psychologists or psychiatrists down, okay, to facilitate our group. And every Friday, we have at least 100 of our members there. They won't let us back in. We need some type of support on what the heck is going on down there. When we go down, I always look in that room, it's full. They have meetings in there all the time. Why won't they let this group in? I don't understand. This group, a lot of the guys don't leave their house until Friday. It's a shame what the East Orange is doing. We talk to the heads of state down there, they act like they want to turn their head, you know. This group, I've been a member of this group for over 15 years, some of them have been a lot longer than me, and we take in new ones. And it's always vets helping vets. This is what we do, and we can't mingle down there. We travel, I've been to the Naval Academy, I've been to West Point, I've been all over to the Marine Museum, we travel. We have a chance to get out and communicate with each other, and it's a real tight group. And I'm going to have to try to get in contact with somebody so they can hear my voice, because I'm speaking up for my LZ Hope group. Thank you.
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion. Sorry.
I'm not quick enough. Hi, everyone, my name is Linda Ransom, I'm from Wayne, I'm the president of Friends of Lorwood Arboretum. First of all, I want to commend everyone who has opposed the closure of the Getty Avenue Veterans Affairs Office. My dad served in Korea, my brother served in Vietnam, both in the Navy, and our family is a big Navy family, and I commend you all. I'd like to change the topic, if I may. You have a resolution that you're going to be approving tonight, I think it's Resolution 61, the award of grants under the Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. And Lorwood Arboretum, Friends of Lorwood Arboretum submitted an application for a grant, and we see that that grant was not included in the list in the resolution. And we were told at the June 1 meeting of the advisory, the Open Space Advisory Committee, that the committee was going to make a recommendation for a grant of $75,000. This is to install a deer fence to protect the open space of the only accredited arboretum in all of Passaic County from the depredations of deer. And Deputy County Administrator Mark Seaman told me when I entered the room tonight that there would be an explanation of why we were not included. I haven't heard that explanation yet, I don't know if Mr. Seaman has an explanation for that, but I didn't want the public portion of the meeting to be closed and not have an opportunity to make the case that a grant to Friends of Lorwood Arboretum to install a deer fence is a critical need, and it's a critical need for the public and it's a public good. So with that, if anyone can enlighten me as to why the board has not included a grant for Friends of Lorwood Arboretum, where the Open Space Advisory Committee told me personally that it would be included in the recommendation by the committee to the board, I would be happy to hear that news so that I can address it.
Just so that, you know, once the public portion is closed, then the Commissioners will generally answer concerns that people came up, not individually.
Okay, but am I, will I get a chance to respond then? Because I don't know the-
This is your response, no, we don't have back and forth, you're allowed to comment on it, so we'll answer you the best we can, so you'll get an answer to your question. You'll get an answer to your question, but we don't have general discussion at a meeting, nobody does. You said your case and said what you said, we will give you an answer when everybody else who wants to talk, talks, then we answer what issues we have to answer.
Oh, okay, so after you close the public portion, then you will respond to me?
Yes.
Okay, so if I can make my case then?
Three minutes, and you've already had three minutes, so how much case do you need to make? Everybody gets three minutes to speak.
All right, okay, well, let me just say that if it turns out that we've been excluded from the list of grantees, and the board will not reconsider our application, and not knowing why we were excluded, I just want to say that it was a shame that we didn't get an opportunity to present at the board level our case for a deer fence. We spent two and a half years researching it, we have expert opinions, that the arboretum will be left as a treeless scrubland of just invasive plants, and the arboretum is a public good.
And I have to stop you because you've been way beyond three minutes, and we are, we're aware of the arboretum, we spent a lot of money donating to you through the Open Space Fund, so we'll answer your other questions at the end of this.
I understand that, the last grant we got was five years ago. Thank you.
Can we, well, okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Will Smith, I'm the new commander at the Chapter One Passaic DAV Hall, and I'd like to know that we're doing, to let you know that we're doing, you know, things for the veterans and the disabled veterans, hundreds if we can, and what we're doing right now is opening up our doors to help veterans to get back and forth to different things and help them with their paperwork and other little things that they need to be helped with. So that's why I'm here today, to see what's going on with the closing of the hall, I mean, the hospital. So again, my name is Will Smith, Chapter One DAV, and we're looking to keep moving forward. Thank you.
My name is Alice Moskowitz, and I'm from Wayne, I'm a past president of Friends of Lorwood Arboretum, and, pardon me?
You're addressed to-
27 Teague Road in Wayne. I just want to reinforce for the Commissioners, I know you are familiar with the park, but I just want to put it in context for you, this is a treasure in Passaic County. I was looking around at the pictures here, and I see that there's one of the Di Mansion. Right now at the Di Mansion, the Master Gardeners are honoring their graduates for this year. Lorwood Arboretum is a project of the Master Gardeners. The arboretum will not be what it should be, the beautiful place for everybody to enjoy if we can't keep the deer out. They are decimating the arboretum. It is a beautiful place, it's a place enjoyed by thousands of people from all over Passaic County, not just Wayne, and it will be a great loss if this park is not preserved because we can't get a fence to keep the deer out. So I just want you to think about the importance of the fence and the importance of the arboretum to Passaic County. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Timothy Holland, I live at 9195 Belmont Avenue in Patterson, New Jersey. I'm the commander of Alva Lawson VFW Memorial Post in Passaic, New Jersey. Soon Tony going to help me make one in Patterson. But I would like to thank you, the Commissioners, for forcing this through, because it's a lot of us lost our doctor, that, like she said, they already transferred our doctors to Hackensack, and we got new doctors now down at the same thing. I go there all the time. A lot of us is upset about our doctors being taken, and they didn't ask us, they just changed them. And then they give us the story that our doctors are not part of the VA system anymore, because I guess they want to make up the money they lost, I don't know. But when we go to Hackensack and talk to the doctors, that's not the story we get. They get the story that they was going to close it, and that's why they went to Hackensack to save their jobs. But I would like to thank you for assisting us and getting this passed, and hopefully it stands and it stay that way. All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Robert Walker, I'm actually a vet, and I have to thank the board now for keeping something good in Patterson, because just being in Patterson, Patterson has so many negative connotations. Patterson, oh, you live in Patterson? Oh, but still, this is something that helps us vets, and it's something that's good, and you guys are still trying to keep this in Patterson, and for that I thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bernie Kerwin, 23 Burnside Place, Askew, New Jersey, I am the new District One Commander. And what I'd like to thank you all for your support for this VA faculty here in Getty Ave, because there's a lot of people I know to go there. And what I think what you got to remember is, most of the veterans today are on a fixed income. Price of gas, $5 a gallon, we got to go to Hackensack or all these other places, it's money that the veterans don't have. So consider with this, with all your things, because it's not getting cheap out there, and you all know that, and it's getting a little worse every day. But thank you for keeping us here in Patterson, because it'll help a lot of people. Thank you.
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion. Second.
Okay. County Commissioners Bartlett-
Yes.
Best-
Yes.
Duffy-
Yes.
Gallo-
Yes.
Lepore-
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera-
Yes.
Director James-
Yes.
Director, through you, if I can just make one comment, I should have made it before, but to Tony Van Cherry, know you a long time, you're a great man, you're a great veteran. As a father of a veteran, spent almost two years in combat, I have the unique perspective of what veterans go through in combat. I was lucky, my son came home, he gave me two beautiful grandchildren, which I'm eternally grateful for. So whatever you feel that you need, you have a friend here, you have a friend on this entire board, along with our congressional delegation, and rest assured that you will not be denied, as long as I can, have the power to do something to help whatever cause or whatever need is out there for our outstanding veterans. Thank you so much for all you do.
Through you, Director, I just wanted to address, Henry? That's me. Our veteran officer for the counties here, a few months back, his name is Wilfredo Rodriguez, he's sitting right next to David Pearson. So Wilfredo spent over 20 years in the Navy, he also has a degree, and correct me if I'm wrong, Wilfredo, in counseling, okay? Wilfredo started a group a few months ago called Vets to Vets, and it's held at our Toadua offices, and we invite, everything you spoke about, what you did in East Orange, Wilfredo's putting groups together, so he will bring veterans together and let you guys talk, and Shirley's here, we're even willing to feed everybody who goes, right, Shirley? But I'd like to encourage the veterans that are here that are looking for a group to join, to sit down with the people who served, just to talk, just among yourselves, like Tony said, you don't want to talk in front of your wives or your kids or anyone else, you want to talk to other veterans. So I, and I think Wilfredo has something to say.
So my name is Wilfredo Rodriguez, I'm a veteran, 42 years, I have a master's in social work, so if anybody wants to come.
Thank you, do I need this? Thank you, sir. So listen, if anybody wants to come, it's all confidential, I'm a licensed social worker, so I know how important confidentiality is, and I know what a great group, you know, was it, LZ Hope is, right? I've heard so much about it. I'd like to do something locally, I mean, LZ Hope, that, you know, that's a hike, you know, down in East Orange. So if you want to come, it's been a struggle, it's been an uphill battle, you know, trying to get people to our facility, but we're open, we're here to serve you, you don't have to go, you know, 20 miles, you can just come to Toadua. We do have great coffee, right, Shirley? But listen, it's all confidential, you know, we meet every other Tuesday, you know, sometimes it's just me and a few other people, but listen, we want to get the word out, we don't want it to be a secret. What you say won't be a secret, but we don't want our group to be a secret. So we meet there, so listen, please come, okay? So thank you, thank you Commissioners, and all the veterans.
I don't know, Wilfredo, do you have any of your cards with you or anything?
I do. Hey, we're always prepared in the Navy, us Navy guys.
Thank you.
All right, before we move on to the rest of the agenda, I just want to acknowledge the folks that came from Lorwood. I heard you, I've heard as well from a lot of your neighbors, this is an issue that people are absolutely contacting us about, and, you know, as a regular at the plant sale and a visitor from time to time, I hope that I can be helpful to you and be part of a dialogue, because it is this particular proposal, as you pointed out, we funded the greenhouses and the Mippenberg Education Center and many other things over the years, you know, I hope if I can be helpful in that dialogue between the arboretum and its neighbors, don't hesitate to call on me.
And do you have an answer that you wanted to answer them for or no? That was it? Listen, we weren't presented with that for your group this year, so we weren't presented with that grant- And unfortunately, they didn't recommend you this year and your project. So we can't, we're not gonna take money out of, where are we gonna get the rest of the money? They allocated what is for this year allocated, and there's just no more money. We go by what they do, that's why we have a committee. So we live by what they recommend to us. Rarely do we ever disagree with it. It would have to be an extreme situation, but, you know, everybody thinks that there's the most important project for a number of reasons, and all of them, some of them have dire things that they want done. You know, unfortunately, it's a limited fund, and, you know, for those who pay the most into it, like our cities, they get, they get kind of first dibs on the money that comes back out because they're paying the most in. So it's for this year, we're done with what we, you know, what the recommendations were gonna be, and we don't, and once it gets to this point, we don't change those recommendations, otherwise why have an advisory committee? So that's what happened to you.
Well, Friends of Laurawood Arboretum is a nonprofit, but Laurawood Arboretum is a public park owned by the township of Wayne.
They didn't apply for it, so I can't help you, and you're done talking because it's not a debate. I'm just giving you the answer that you requested. It's not on for this year, and I can't change that, neither can this board. I, I mean, you know, I'm sorry that it, that it's so, but it is so. So apply again next year, and, you know, you should talk to your neighbors because a lot of them do not want a deer fence because of the deer coming onto their property. So there are issues with this, that's not what came to us, you know, and that's just secondary to what the committee had to consider, but that's where we're at right now. For this year, it's not an approved project. Ask Wayne to put in.
I will.
Yeah, because they should want to. I mean, if it's a public park in Wayne, then that's who maybe should, you know, make the-
It's a public park in Wayne.
Yeah, they should make the request because they pay, they pay into the fund.
And he is the biggest contributor to the Passaic County Open Space Fund.
I don't know who told you that, or it may not, it may, may not be true, he just said it is true.
It is true.
Okay, great. But that doesn't mean that, that's not, that's Wayne. You're not Wayne, you're just one park, right? You're in Wayne, but-
But it's a Wayne Township Park.
Yeah.
I, I understand, but this conversation-
Open space is for the entire county, so people pay based on their taxes, right? And it's whatever percent it is, it's a couple of cents. How much?
One penny on every-
One penny on every hundred. So whatever the tax base is, that's what it is, you know, and I can't change that, and it is what it is. We get in and we get more requests for money than we get in. Okay, so everything, everything in its time, you know?
I apologize for bringing you to the board.
Why?
The only reason I did it-
Not before us that they recommended it. Yeah, I, I get it. No, you're not bothering me, honestly, and I may sound like you're bothering, you're not. I actually really like what you do, and I like the place, and I understand the problem with deer. They're everywhere. I mean, they're, they're just everywhere, and they're a problem, and there's no natural predators, and we don't do a culling because that was a disaster. You know, it just was. So anyway, do apply again next year, and, you know, if we can find some other way to help you this year, we'll try to find some other way to help you, you know? You know, you, you know, you, you can apply for grants in other places too. It doesn't have to be just open space, and, you know, maybe somebody from our planning department can guide you into what may be available to you because, you know, there are other resources that people have, and if you're a nonprofit, sometimes there's grants out there that we're not aware of either. You know, we, we did Friends of Passaic County Park just to be able to leverage, you know, applying for various grants. So, you know, for what you reported here, and believe me, we are all sympathetic, and I know maybe it doesn't sound like it, but I think that if you, if you look and we help you look for grants, maybe you can find those to do, you know, to help you control the deer.
Can I just, real, real quick, since we're talking about Wayne and the Open Space Trust Fund, Wayne does contribute the most of any municipality-
I already said that, Charlie.
-also received the most this year in grants.
Okay.
And, and again, what I would suggest too is try to have conversations with the neighbors, right? So these open space grants are supposed to be, you know, making everybody feel good, right? So when you have competing interests like that, so the, the commissioners put a deer fence up at Garrett Mountain, but the first thing that we did before we did that was we met with Friends of Garrett Mountain and make sure that they were on board with us doing this to try to save it. So, I mean, I think everyone up here understands the issue, and anyone who ever plants anything in their backyard understands what the deer do. But I, I, I think it would be helpful in this period of time, you know, between now and next year, that you try to have conversations with the local neighbors and try to see if there, you can come to a meeting of the minds. Keep trying.
Anyway, we gotta move on. Are there any, moving on to the consent agenda, first things first, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda? Any late starters?
Yes, Director, through you, we have two late starters tonight. The first one will be Resolution Number 69, the resolution, thank you, resolution condemning the opinion issued by the Supreme Court of the United States in Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization et al. and urging elected officials in New Jersey to protect a woman's right to choose in the state and nation pursuant to NJSA 40:20-1. The second one is Resolution 70, M70. It's a resolution amending the 2020-22 Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund budget pursuant to NJSA 40:20-1.
All right. Can I have a motion to add those to the agenda, please?
I'll move it.
Second.
All. County Commissioners Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lapour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director James? Yes. Is there anybody, any commissioner on the board who wishes to vote no and have us consider that motion separately? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make that motion.
Second.
All. County Commissioners Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lapour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director James? Yes. Is there anybody, any commissioner on the board who wishes to vote no and have us consider that motion separately? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make that motion.
Second.
All. County Commissioners Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lapour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director James? Yes. No new business? Can I have a motion on the personnel agenda?
I'll move the personnel. Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lou, you wanted some time. Here's your time, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Director James, for the opportunity to thank the members of the Board of County Commissioners for voting and adopting my resolution tonight, reappointing me to a sixth term as clerk to the board and the first time as clerk to the Board of County Commissioners.
Can we re-vote on that?
I didn't see that.
I, I, I can't help that you have-
Too late now, too late now.
It's too late. I promise. As a political science major for King's College, I would have never imagined having the opportunity to seamlessly serve in government for 30 years. Six years in the federal government, and come February 1st, I will have completed 24 years of service to the great residents of the county of Passaic. So thank you, County Commissioners, for putting your trust in me to get the job done for you. To the man to my left, Anthony De Nova, I want to thank you for being my mentor, advisor, and I'm proud to call you my brother. One thing Anthony takes very seriously, and I mean very, very seriously, is family. So when I call him my brother, it means a whole lot. Tonight completes 15 years of Tony and I sitting up here together to show the ordinary and then the extraordinary things that government of the county of Passaic carries out daily and day in and day out under the leadership of the Board of County Commissioners. And Mr. De Nova leads the county administration second to none. All of us on this dais and the department heads and the deputy department heads and administrators lead a textbook operation on how government should be run. I enjoy working with my fellow department heads as the Board of County Commissioners host unique, impactful, and educational special events for our residents of the county of Passaic. I enjoy all these events that are hosted by the board, but I take very seriously ribbon cuttings. The reason being is it is a culmination of excellent craftsmanship and labor of all the men and women that work for the county of Passaic. I want to especially thank our county council, Matthew Jordan, and his entire department who work, who, who my office works day in and day out handling the many facets of the behind-the-scenes operations for this corporation to operate daily. To my office, Lisa, Jasmine, Jason, and Lisa, and our great intern Ebony Bug, thank you. You know me and you get me, and we are a small operation, but we get the job done, and that is to always make the Board of County Commissioners look awesome. I also want to thank Sheriff Richard Birdnick, the, and the great men and women of the department who protect us and are very instrumental in the many events that are hosted by the county. And to my family, my rock, my north star, and my beautiful inside and outside wife Danielle, who is with us tonight. I want to thank you from the very bottom of my heart and from the very top of my heart for being in my life. I love you very much. I thank you again for the opportunity to serve.
You know, it's only a two-week term, right? You knew that. Hate it when he gets emotional, then we gotta tell him the bad news.
Thank you. The brother I never wanted.
I don't think they, I don't think they pay support. Sort of out of it. All right, motion to approve the personnel agenda, please?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
County Commissioners Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lapour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director James? Yes. And before we adjourn, I just want all of us to stand up and give every vet a standing ovation that came here tonight because you deserve it. Again, thank you for what you do. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I did.
Did?
Second.
Very quiet for change. Roll. County Commissioners Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lapour?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director James? Yes. And before we adjourn, I just want all of us to stand up and give every vet a standing ovation that came here tonight because you deserve it. Again, thank you for what you do. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I did.
Did?
Second.
Very quiet for change. Roll. County Commissioners Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?